I know, that's what I mean. We kind of have this.
Oh, yeah, that's true. I'm sure that my needs were up.
Yeah. You know, this stuff, see, I have this shirt on.
Yeah.
I should put it on.
Yeah. No, because that's better.
Yeah. I get it. You know what I'm doing? But, but, because also if I turn the water, something else that shot at me during school.
Thank you. That might as well be cool.
It's difficult, yeah. And, you know, I don't know what we, I got.
No, I missed, well, I think it was last time. It just feels like it's been so long.
You know, honestly, the contracts are either we already have or something like that. That's what happens. You know, I guess, you like coming to all the reasons.
Well, I think there was one more, three, or like five Monday's last month, so then it was like an extra.
That's. I think we need. I think we should. Have anything going on with the baseball.
Baseball Thursday, yes. Baseball Thursday, right?
Yes. You have some practice. There's been a lot of work to do with the agency issues. But ask you to send a representative, a kid, send a representative, a kid to sit in and be on the panel for like a football game or something.
Yes.
More important, everyone's got baseball or softball or track or something. Yep.
School.
School. Oh, thank you. It's just, I didn't know why I bring it, just I carry a pen.
I carry a pen.
A lot of legal documents for the lawyer. Just can't burn documents, apparently.
This is let's everybody know how it goes.
Internet may know it's over.
He's kind of a big deal.
Kind of a big deal. Did I say that? I never said that. When I was eleven, grade I was big. When I was a junior in high school, I was kind of a big deal. Haven't been much since. All right. Call meeting board, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to read the district commission statement. So, can we, um, trying to, the mission statement of the district is in partnership with the community's mission of Delworth Middle Development School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, life on purpose. On the right. Roll call. Um, and we've got our board members here except for Brittany and Lindsay. We have, um, Mary Ann Park here as well. And, yes. Um, all right. For the, uh, agenda was sent out. Do I have a motion? No change, no change, no changes. Do I have a, do I get a motion turned out? Brittany.
I'm Nicole.
Nicole, sorry. My hearing's out.
We've only known each other a couple of years since I.
Well, she does sit down sometimes.
She doesn't. You're correct.
Sorry, Brit, motion by Brittany, do I have a second? Motion by Nicole. Motion by Nicole. Good.
This is Laura.
Laura, Laura's been second. Any questions or discussion? All those with favor say aye. Aye. All same sign. Motion carries. Five, public comments and verbal recognition. Why we start with public comments? I think we have somebody here, um, that would like to speak. He said, Brittany.
So you do have five minutes? And then when you have a minute left, I'll just kind of. See how fast I can talk.
There you go.
Okay, my name is Lisa Killian. Uh, I have two children in the DGF middle school, and you all may be wondering why I'm here today. And I've been kind of questioning myself, um, since my last correspondence with DGF middle school myself. So, um, this board has a complete record of my correspondence with DGF middle school and the formal complaint that I have filed. Um, today I want to talk about a little bit why I keep being very persistent on this issue. Um, my child was hit on the head with a book by another student in DGF middle school. And DGF policy 50611, sorry, we're going to cover policy, but, um, it's considered an assault, and an assault is very defined by DGF policy. And DGF policy also covers what is considered a weapon. It doesn't have to be a traditional weapon. It can be anything that is used for the purpose to inflict bodily harm or intimidate. So thankfully, my child suffered minor injuries and did not need medical attention after the assault with a weapon. After receiving a blanket statement of confidentiality from DGF middle school stating that they cannot release any information as to what discipline measures were taken against these, after the assault took place, I have spent countless hours reviewing Minnesota statutes and DGF policy. I completed this research to learn what this confidentiality policy actually covers and to learn what rights my child has under Minnesota laws and DGF policies. Thankfully, I have some training in legal research from my paralegal degree at MSUM. DGF policy 514, 5A, states that within three days, a complaint must be filed with the school, and the school shall undertake or authorize an investigation. Furthermore, DGF policy 514, 7G, gives my child and I the right to obtain access to that data related to the assault, our right to contest the accuracy or completeness. And thankfully, after my, after my persistent follow-up, DGF middle school sent on a copy of the report a week after the incident for our review. I now know, after many research, hours of research and review of Minnesota laws and DGF policy, that there are many more protections and rights given to the assaulter than the victim of the assault. I now know that while my child is on school grounds during school hours, I am not afforded the knowledge as to how policy is followed by discipline actions, de-escalation, or violence prevention, that are protecting my child against the student who has assaulted him and who has a history of doing it in the past. Thankfully, my child has not been an ongoing victim of this violence or an assault from the student, and he does not suffer every day. DGF policy 525 sets forth violence prevention. It defines the purpose of the policy to recognize the violence has increased and to identify measures that the school district will take in an attempt to maintain a learning environment and working environment that is free from violent and disruptive behavior. That policy further sets forth implementation of the policy in preventive, in preventive strategies. Thankfully, this school board has recognized an increase of violence within DGF schools and has set forth policies to recognize, investigate, and act promptly to all acts of violence. So again, you may be asking why I'm up here? What if I were to take away every thankful statement I just said? What if my child was seriously injured by the violence? And, and it's not a matter of if it ever happens again, maybe not to my child, but it will happen again in DGF. What if a parent doesn't know how to research statutes and policies and cite them in their correspondence to the school? What if a parent doesn't know their right to obtain information as to their child's report of the incident? What if a child is suffering through constant bullying, violence, and assaults? I ask for this board not to take away the last thankfully statement of having a school board that recognizes an increase of violence within DGF schools and having policies to recognize, investigate, and act promptly for all acts of violence. DGF policy 301, 2B states, this school board expects all activities related to school district operations to be administered in a well-mannered, well-planned manner, conducted in an orderly fashion, and to be consistent with the policies of this school board. So I'm asking you, the school board, to make sure our school district follows those policies you all have set forth. DGF school district is accountable to comply with and enforce every policy that this board sets forth. DGF school does not get to hide behind a blanket cover of confidentiality to escape accountability on management within this school. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another public comments. Uh, to represent the mission. Um, I guess the seniors' graduation is next week, so, um, I think you guys will be approving that list, uh, later in the board meeting, so congratulations to those seniors. Uh, boys track, uh, true team, they're going to that this coming weekend, this week, Saturday. Uh, ta, 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 ta. All the other sports are kind of getting closer to wrapping up in section play. I know for softballs next week. Baseball, maybe golf. I know they're all like full bowl, so they're all antagonically coaches. I think every day they're at something, it's something other than Wednesday, so.
And our hats off to the transportation department, trying to wrangle all the sports, plus all the last activities and the field trips and the, um, end of the year things for the middle school and the elementary. I got like four emails where my kids are heading in different directions, and Eileen is taking her.
Yeah, she is.
Now getting there, so, um, kudos to all of those drivers.
Yep, they're going in a lot of directions, so, yeah, thank you for saying that. Uh, speech and debate night is Wednesday night this week. Uh, for their awards. For their award, yep, so, just, uh, yeah. Just a note. Uh, concerts were last week in different.
Yeah.
So, kudos to the music department. And, uh, jazz band concert on Friday night, and maybe there's some vocal there too, I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure. But I know it's, know the jazz bands. Yeah, so a lot happening around the middle school here. All right, let's move on to six point one, special education. Mary Ann.
I, can I go to the right? Yes, you want to. Thank you. It's kind of, I just have to say it now because it's out here. Um, so you look at the chart, and of course Shannon looks at it and he goes, so you see up at the top, that green one, it doesn't have a label. You know, I've looked at this probably a hundred times. I've read it, I've looked at it. Shannon looks at it and goes, so what's that little green one? I'm like, I don't know. So, it's either, um, 1.5 or either severely culturally impaired or physically impaired. I don't know how it got cut off, I don't know where it went, but it's out there. So, my apologies. But anyway, um, so I ran the numbers on 5, 7, 24. Um, we have 328 students that are active in sped forms for receiving special education services. Um, on that same date, total enrollment was 1,555 students, so that's 21% of our enrolled students receiving special education services. Um, you do look at it, we do have, um, currently being tested out of that number, it was 3.3, or it's 3.3%, which is about seven kids were being tested still. So they're finishing up evals, and I know even by the end of last week, some of those kids had, um, been done, the evaluation was done, and they were qualified for special. That was about four of them out of the seven, so we'll see where we end up with that. But you can see that our numbers have gone up over the last couple of years, you can see that trend. Um, back in May of '21, it was 302. May of '22, it was 294, so we had gone down a little bit. Last year was 296, and now we're up to 328. Um, so just wanted to share that. Do you guys have any questions? About that?
Is the, the current test, you know, 3.3%? Is that, and I know you said like four of them, is that included in the 328?
Yes, so that's, so that's included. They show, even if they're being tested, they show active sped forms, so I counted them as receiving services because they're being tested, but so far, they're all qualifying, so.
Okay.
And that could be speech only, it could be ACD, EDD, any of those disabilities, so a little bit of, so, a little bit of everything, so. Um, also, on May 15th, which is this Wednesday, we have the Unified Special Olympics Track and Field, that's in Moorhead, opening ceremony, I believe is at 10:00 AM. Um, want to talk about ESY. Um, this summer, we'll have our preschool ESY services. Um, all of our services will be at the Delworth site. We have, um, a preschool class in the morning, and in the afternoon, so we have TOTS in the morning, and then afternoon is, um, play to learn. And then we have our school age ESY, that's a six-week program with three days a week from eight to 11. Um, and we're fully staffed for that, so we have five paras and two teachers for the school age ESY. Um, then I just want to kind of go over, just review the staffing for the 24, 25 school year. We've talked about it a little bit at some of the work sessions and also at, I don't know, the last school board, but maybe the school board meeting before that, but, um, positions moving over to the Lake Agassiz Education Cooperative, Part C, Early Childhood Special Ed, that's Kristin Pedry. Part B, Early Childhood Special Ed, that's Rochelle Gilbert. Um, Early Childhood Special Ed, Speech Language Pathologist, we do know the name, it was to be determined, and, um, we will, it'll be to be determined. Um, we'll know soon. Um, a school psychologist, Tiffany Hushley, and then position staying at DGF, all the other special education teachers, Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant, that's Darla Henin, um, our date teacher, Jonathan Poppy, and then the special education paraprofessionals that also stay employed under DGF. Um, and then I just listed the teachers at each site. The DGF elementary will have five special ed teachers. Middle school will also have five. Um, as we know, Geraldine Clean Guard, she has been subbing this whole school year, and she's retiring from retirement. And, um, I'm moving Kristen Warren over to the middle school special ed. She has been at Delworth Elementary, um, but we're moving her over there because of our numbers. High school will have four special ed teachers. Um, need to hire for 24, 25 school year, possibly, um, a speech language pathologist. Um, I know right now, one special ed para for preschool, and that's due to the preschool expansion. Two to three special ed paras for DGF elementary, um, I'm waiting to hear on a resignation. I do have a couple people who have, who are for sure resigning, and I'm waiting to hear back from one other person. And, um, Brittany, John, and I, we met with the special ed teachers, and we're kind of working through how many paras we need and with the resignations, so, um, that's why I know that number for sure. And then at the middle school, we've had one resignation, and so I'm looking at hiring two for the middle school. And then for the high school, two paras, we've been short one para all year, so, um, and then position that we'll no longer have at DGF is that occupational therapy, and that's because Lake Agassiz Education Cooperative will be covering the current direct and consultation times for OT and covering supervision of the Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant, which is Darla, Darla Henin. The majority of, uh, OT time was consultation, there's some direct for preschool. And Lake Agassiz, with their current employees, they'll be able to cover that time for us, and so that's why we no longer have that position. Uh, the 2022, 23, it's the MDE Indicator Data Collection, that's our record review. I, last spring, I said we hadn't gotten our, um, report back yet. When we got that report back, we didn't have any citations, so that was good. I completed the IDC for 23, 24, and as of right now, we haven't received that information back. Um, special ed monitoring for the 24, 25 school year. Um, originally, DGF was in cohort five, but because Lake Agassiz Educational Co-op, they're in cohort one, so we will be part of monitoring next school year because we're now part of Lake Agassiz, and so they'll keep us all on the same rotation now. And one of the areas that they'll be looking at is that progress reporting. So, um, we're talking with Scott, we'll be ramping up those supports for progress report writing and what the teachers need to do for that. Um, I just wanted to add this, um, Shannon and I, and then Scott, ID Jorgensen, it's one of their site coordinators for, um, the inter-agency programs, and then Sarah Bersteg, she's one of the coordinators, um, they came out to DGF and they met with all the special ed teachers that could attend, and, um, Scott just said, you know, our goal for Lake Agassiz for next year is getting to know each other. And that really comforted me as well because I think that's nice to have that as a goal because I think we're all going to learn a lot from each other next year. Um, and also a focus on policies, procedures, and protocols, special ed processes, guiding documentation, present level templates, evaluation templates, progress reporting, curriculum utilization, et cetera. So, um, and then also the save the dates, we already have workshop, um, planning in the works. Um, the paraprofessionals workshop, uh, their first one will be August 22nd, and that will be at Lake Agassiz Education Cooperative in Holly, and then our second day for the paras is August 26th, that's our first workshop day for everybody, all the teachers as well. And then, um, August 19th, um, Lake Agassiz, they have a summer workshop date for licensed staff, so that would be the teachers. So looking forward to that. And I just have to say that Lake Agassiz is also, you know, they've been including me in the, you know, like, decision-making, um, the trainings and all that, so August is looking very, very busy with all the trainings that are going on, and I'm going to a couple different trainings in August too, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, just a couple questions. Um, special, how many students do we send to that group?
We usually send about 12, 13, 12 and 13, right around there.
And then, uh, the biggest category in the pie chart is the specific ones.
Yes.
What does that entail?
So that would be your reading, writing, and math.
Oh.
The areas where the students have difficulties, and they don't have to qualify in all of those areas, reading, writing, and math. You'd be really high in math, but qualify in reading.
Sure. Thank you. I will say, um, Scott's coming out over tomorrow to meet with Marcus.
Oh.
So, business manager, so I know they have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to go over some, uh, that conversation, I guess. And then, uh, the other thing is just, as Mary Ann noted earlier, um, we're hiring somebody else in preschool for a para because our numbers are, our preschool numbers are actually higher than our kindergarten numbers right now. So, I'd like to hear the kindergarten numbers jump, but, but the future has got to just, the kindergarten numbers are still a little bit challenging, but yeah, so.
It'll be interesting to see because when you get that, when you put it into the school, your child buying should be a little bit higher because they're in the building and teachers are going to be working with them, so it'll be interesting to see, I'll talk about that. But I mean, how exciting to have these kids in the building. Early intervention, as we know, is so important, and if they're in the building, they're going to be wonderful. So that's, so that's positive.
That's true.
That's a good thing.
Any other questions for Mary Ann?
I just have a question for Darla, where it says that the Lakes Country will be supervising.
Because for Certified Occupational Therapy Assistants, uh, the work that she does has to be supervised by an occupational therapist, and Lake Agassiz has that position.
But she's still a DGF staff?
Yeah, she's a DGF staff, but because we're part of the co-op, that supervision can come from Lake Agassiz.
So any, like, would you still do, like, an eval?
Yeah, so, um, when I say supervision, it's more so for the work that she's doing with the students. It's because she's a occupational therapy assistant, um, you have to have that supervision by a licensed occupational therapist.
Sure, so that's shifted since the OT isn't part of.
Yes, yep, yeah, because it used to be our current OT, and now that she will be here for Lake Agassiz, and we've talked a little bit about part of my role, and I'll probably be doing some of the evals for teachers, so, um, continue.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, what's, uh, the six point two, fourth figure for the personnel report? Because the only thing we really have to report is that we were able to reach agreement with the non-certified staff. Um, with, well, um, we did, you know, our goal is to try to, um, increase participation in the, um, health plan, and we offered $12,000 per individual, that was like a $3,000 increase. Um, so hopefully we'll see some more participation in the healthcare plan. Um, the overall increase was right around, unpaid was right around three and a half percent, something like that, three and three and a half, over three and three and a half. Um, you know, and that's a smaller group, but obviously, you know, we know that we've got a, we're coming into the work for next year, um, but they also have concerns about inflation, so it's always challenging. Any other notes?
No, I think that was, I think it's summary of what we're thinking.
So, yeah, and we keep, we've moved down the, you know, one of the things was the incentive for the, um, incentive to not take health insurance, but CAF, or what do we call it? Yeah. Calcare, CAF Care Plan. They can use them for whatever they want. We reduced that, um, down to $1,500 in the second year. Yep. So right now it's at 2,500. It was about 5,000 before. Forty-seven, fifty-seven, so. Making good progress on that, and hopefully that will increase people.
I think overall the negotiations, just in general, this year have gone fairly well and very positive interactions and conversation.
Yep, agreed too. Um, all right, so we go on to six point three, superintendent. Yeah, I just kept it pretty simple. I did add a few things, but I kind of threw it on with, uh, Mary Ann's, is that, that, um, Scott's going to meet with Marcus tomorrow, so I thought I'd share that. Um, but graduation, so, um, obviously, we have, the two to my left here are going to be on stage with me, so that's good, or with that, and so you guys will present the diploma, so thank you again for doing that. And it is this, or it's next Friday, this Friday, next Friday at five o'clock, so, you know, hopefully you both still. Anyway, so thanks again for that. Um, board work session, uh, next thing I have there is that. Uh, I'd like to do it in June. Um, in the past, uh, or last year, I should say, we did it in here. We had the admin come in the afternoon, I believe we were, uh, just the board in the morning, uh, admin came in the afternoon, and then we went out and had a meal and spent some time, uh, on a bond too. Um, so this year, um, I'm, I'm trying to decide if we should just do the board, and I'll just do the admin and administrators with me at a different time, but I want to have some input from you, so in the next week or two, um, one, I'd like to figure out a date. Brooke and I would like to get it on the calendar for a work session, which works best for you guys. Um, obviously, we work here, so it's easy for us to be here. You guys don't, so trying to work it out Monday, or Friday, or Wednesday, you know, I don't know, that's kind of, um.
So just email Brooke.
Yeah, and I guess we're, we're pretty open in June. Um, I don't know what you guys, your schedules are, so if we can just have some communication, I don't know, David, if you want to kind of lead that conversation or not as the chair, but I, I would like it to get scheduled sooner or later, I think that's best for everybody. And then whether or not, we, I have a tentative agenda already started, um, that I can share with you, David, I guess, and we can go up, we can add things to, because it's your reading as much as it is anybody else's, so if you have things you want to discuss, or Lindsay and Brittany aren't here, they have things to. So I'm going to share that in my weekly update this week, um, and, uh, maybe even Brooke and I could come up with a handful of dates to throw out, but a day of the week is, obviously you guys know your day is better than I, so, okay? So that's, uh, I guess important, and I just want to make sure we get something scheduled, which, um, again, I have an agenda, it's strategic planning, it's evals, it's next year, it's all kinds of stuff, so, which I'll share. But, yeah, that's it tonight, I thought I'd kind of keep it quick because I thought you were, Mary Ann speaking, so.
Um, I know that I missed the last meeting, but just an update, what are your kindergarten numbers looking like?
Right now it's 70, correct? 70. So, very concerning.
What is the, what's the current kindergarten?
Hundred and thirty-three, I think, thirty-four. Yeah. Yeah. How much does it normally increase from now to? Um, I would say around 30. So that'll get us to 100 if we get 30. I'd say 20 to 30. Uh, we've had a lot of discussions, obviously, there's been other messages sent out, there's probably going to be another postcard, I just think it might be, they're just not there, I don't know. You don't have kids, you don't have kids, right? Um, our preschool is at 85. It's so, which is awesome for a year for now, but it doesn't help us right now, so, um, again, if anybody's watching, if you have a kindergartner and you have it enrolled, please do so. We just, uh, staffing is, we've already made some adjustments on staffing, and I'd like to not have to make any more, but we also need kids, so. Yeah, thanks for asking.
Yep.
Other questions from, if you do some other information in your weekly update, I don't know if there's things from that here. Okay. All right. We'll go on to seven point one. Uh, this is for a, a motion to approve meeting minutes from a.
This is for a motion to approve meeting minutes from April 22nd, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Eevee, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Make sure I said Nicole. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both sign, motion carries. All right, with consent to it, April 1, claims and counts for May 24. Treasurer's monthly budget report is in your packet. We also have the resignation of Sam Colseth, Bicycle Association Studies, effective in the 2023-2024 school year. Prove the resignation of Kelsey Bosler, Paraprofessional, effective May 22nd, 2024. Prove the resignation of Abby Sklebar, Middle School, FACS, effective the end of the 2023. Do I have a motion? Motion by Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Questions or discussion?
Just a couple of things. If you noticed on the $287,000 bills, $75,000 of that came from Fund Six, which is the construction. We did close out Mission Mechanicals. Retainage, some ongoing, we were in mediation with them and whatnot. We did close out some of that. There's still some ongoing mediation with them. But anyway, so that's there, which is good. Which you probably noticed like, okay, Fund Six, I thought we were done with Fund Six. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. And then the last thing is to Sam and Abby and Kelsey, just thank you for their time. Sam and Abby have another opportunity, so congratulations to them. Our loss for sure. And same with Kelsey is pursuing something different. So I just wanted to address that and thank them for their time.
Mr. Colseth is a fan favorite in the house, so.
Yep, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Both, motion carries. Number nine, new in the business, nine point one, ten of the class of 2024 D G F graduates. This is the first list that was in your pack. Do I have a motion? Motion by Nicole, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Eevee. Any questions or discussions on the, how many, yeah?
Ninety-nine, ninety-six, no, ninety-six, ninety-six. Ninety-six going out, at least seventy coming in. I hope it's ninety-six.
Yeah, right. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both sign, motion carries. Nine point two, this is a motion for to approve the milk bids with cats played for fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Eevee, second. Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussions? This was in your package as well. Very good discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Nine point three, this is for a motion to approve the bread bids with animal for fiscal year 2025. Do I have a motion? Motion by Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any questions or discussions on the bread bids? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Nine point four, this is for the E S Y contracts. This is a motion to approve the contracts for the summer of 2024. Matt Redser, teacher, $35 an hour up to 63 hours, $25 an hour up to eight hours. Rebecca Donna Hugh, teacher, $35 an hour up to 36 hours, $25 an hour up to five hours. Susan Morgensen, teacher, $35 an hour up to 63 hours, $25 an hour up to eight hours. Emily Bruce, teacher, $35 an hour up to 32 hours, $25 an hour up to 10 hours. Stacy Jensen, para, $18.22 per hour up to 82 and a half hours. Randy Larson, para, $18.59 an hour up to 102 hours. Mackenzie Morella, $18.41 an hour up to 63 hours. Elda Longoria, $18.41 per hour up to 63 hours. Carrie Abner, para, $18.54 up to 63 hours. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion?
The difference between the, like, the 35 and 25 is student contact, correct?
Yes, good question. So, yep, the student contact time is the 35 and then whether prepping and organizing and doing the other things, that's 25, or the contract.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. On to nine point five, confidential contract. To approve confidential contract for Allison Dahlker. That's presented, and this was in your package as well. Do I have a motion? Motion by Eevee, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any questions or discussion?
Just the one I shared a little bit more information on your weekly update. If this is to bridge a gap between her two jobs, because she helps with rebel kids care.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Nine point six, this is to approve non-certified contract for Ashton Belkett, Paraprofessional, Class Two, Step One, effective the start of 2024, 2025 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Eevee, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Nine point seven, this is to approve certified contract for sold-in bank, some early childhood teacher, BA, Step One, effective the start of 2024, 2025 school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion?
So the last two positions were added because of our class size in preschool. So we needed more coverage, so that's why these were added. These are new positions because of our enrollment there, which is awesome.
Yeah. It's working. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Nine point eight, this is donation resolution. So this is a resolution. Laura, which one did you have? And I think.
Okay, so where?
Where do we start?
Whereas.
All right, this is important.
Right, and then not.
So then.
Yep, okay. All right, whereas in these some statutes, 123B, 02 subdivision six provides, or may receive un, for like donation. Purpose, apply the same for the purpose. And that behalf, or may have, we trust created for the district or for the peoples that vote. We trust created to provide pupils of the district access education. School advancement of education demand. Whereas in some statutes, 463.03 provides, any city, county, school district, or town may accept a grant or device of real or personal property and maintains such property for the benefit of its citizens in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor. Nothing herein shall authorize such acceptance or use for religious or sectarian purposes. Every such acceptance shall be resolution of the governing body adopted by a two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in full hand. Whereas every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by a two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in full. Therefore, be a result of the school board of schools, Independence District, 2164, gratefully accepts and call donations as identified. Felton volunteer fireman in the amount of 500 for summer rec. Jim Seidler, a used hose for the outdoor classroom. Amy Monson of three water pails, two gloves, three towels for the outdoor classroom. Jerry and Renee Waller of a garden weasel, trowels, towels, spades, rakes, and hose for the outdoor classroom. Nathan and Jamie Johnson of watering cans, towels for the outdoor classroom. April Liren of sunscreen, bug spray for the outdoor classroom. Sherry Witt of bug spray for the outdoor classroom.
Right. Do I have a motion? Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any questions or discussion? Obviously, a lot of this relates to the outdoor classroom, so that's very nice. And thank everybody for being, they're generous in helping move that program along. Any other questions or discussion?
We, during our facilities and transportation meetings today, we're going to talk a lot about that outdoor classroom. We'll get any more specifics, which we can share after that.
Awesome.
Okay, hearing no more questions or discussions, all those in favor, help me with the roll call. Roll call, this is a restorship. Nicole.
Aye.
Laura. David, aye. Eevee.
Aye.
Mike. Resolution passed. Nine point nine, this is to approve the master agreement between Independent School District, 2164, and the Minnesota School Employees Association, M S E A, for fiscal year 25, fiscal year 2026, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2026. Just to clarify. Do I have a motion? Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Eevee. Any questions or discussion? We've been talking about this for a while, so, yep, the hearing was a pretty good idea. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Ten point one, the next board meeting is set for Tuesday, May 27, 28, 2024 at 6:00 PM here at the D G F community room. And following that will be Policies Committee meeting at the conclusion of the board meeting. Same date. All right, on to 11, to approve adjournments. Do I have a motion? Motion by Nicole, do I have a second? Motion by Laura.
I'll do my second.
Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eating is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I owe you some stuff, I'll get it to you, I promise. I'm part of the foundation.
Vayner's council let me know. Believe this to me, because he was at the lawyers. Remember, it was all good when she, she needed it. But she's having somebody else in office that does it all the time.
Okay.
And she said he should get back early next week.
Okay.
It didn't happen today, but it's still early next week.
Yeah, perfect.
No, appreciate it.
And I'll get those minutes to you too. So I just, I was looking, I was like, oh, yeah, I owe those minutes to Shannon, so.
John and I are going to meet Thursday afternoon. And then we're going to send a reminder again, hey, because some people have to lunch a little quick for.
Yeah, I know, I have it, so I need to do it, yep.
Yeah, so we're going to just send a reminder on that and just say, hey, on the 22nd, hopefully I can make it.
Yeah.
It's just another refresh.
Perfect, okay, thank you. We've covered anything, thank you.
Thank you. I am happy that she will be here for a while.
Let's see you guys. That was exciting. Like I need a knee or something. Or just.
Sorry, your presentation. Our work. Friday is our good reading. This shouldn't be a bad one. I think it's been, I think it's all right.